Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexanderovich?
Here.
And we are here on the meeting that's been publicly posted.
Please rise and join us for the part of leading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four is community comment. There is no one present for community comment, so we'll move to item five. Is there any board member who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. School board announcements. I would just like to announce that today is National Nurses Day, and I would like to recognize our two Florence Nightingales, Ms. Lori O'Neal and Ms. Molly Cow, for their dedication to our students and during this time of the pandemic to our community as a whole. So, thank you very much on behalf of the board to Lori O'Neal and Molly Cow. Are there any other announcements? Okay. Hearing none, item six, school board, I mean, item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting here Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Reports, presentations, and other school board business. Item eight A, the board retreat discussion. We received the doodle calendar results from the board and the directors, and for July, we will schedule the retreat for July 15th, which is a Wednesday.
Repeat that, please.
July 15th, Wednesday. And I hope everyone can hear me because I'm wearing a mask on the phone.
Hold the mic just a little bit closer. Here, let me help you out with that.
Okay. And for that, for that day, we will discuss our board self-evaluation, and if the board approves, we will also discuss the, we'll have a workshop on student services and mental health. I, I hope Ms. Cody knows this. Does she know it yet?
I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Cody about that this afternoon, and she's very excited to have the opportunity.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the board? It's an area we don't often get to learn about, so I hope, I think it's a very interesting topic. So, if that's agreeable, that's what we will do.
What time?
6:00 until 9:00 unless it goes shorter.
Thank you.
The second date would be August 4th, which is a Tuesday. I didn't hear from Mrs. Larson. I didn't know if you were able to go all the way on the calendar or if you weren't sure yet because of such a-
I just picked my favorites. And when it got to August, those weren't my favorites.
Okay. So, every other board member was able, the only, the only day was August 4th. So, is that okay?
It's fine.
Okay. So, August 4th is a Tuesday, and we will discuss our strategic actions and goals on that day. So, that is August 4th.
Six to nine?
Same, yeah. And any other discussion on that? And that's a ways off, so there'll be more information later. So-
So, six to nine?
Correct. Next would be our school liaison reports. I'm going to check my email one more time. They're for community members. Because of the conditions, policy is a community issue, so we were allowing comments. So, there are no comments from the community on our policy. So, item nine B, personnel and policy, policy 4131, drug, alcohol, and tobacco-free workplace. And this is an action item. Last reviewed, 10/2014. All of these policies kind of mesh together. I'm going to call on Dr. Miller, if you don't mind, to go over that policy.
Absolutely. With the legalization of CBD and oils, which can contain illegal levels of THC, I felt it was important to take a look at our policies to make sure that we're covering that base. So, working with our school nurses, this started out at looking at really just our policy pertaining to students to make sure that we were able to enforce the appropriate level of discipline for students who had CBD oils or CBD with levels of THC in them. But that led to talking further about other policies that we have that relate to this. So, it ended up being five policies that we really had to kind of take a closer look at. So, the first policy that Ms. Evans is speaking to this evening really is the one related to personnel. So, it was important that we took a look at that. I did work with Ms. Elihausen and our legal counsel. The legal counsel was very aware of what my intent was here in terms of making sure that we were covered with regard to CBD and helped to propose the changes that you see before you. So, most, some, and most really of this language is from statute as well.
So, before we have any discussion, I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy. 4131 is presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
I think that was a second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion?
So, this one, the changes doesn't mention CBDs?
No, because it's a controlled substance, so that would cover CBD.
I know you specifically mentioned a couple of the other ones, but not this one.
Mm-hmm. And I was, I was pretty clear about my intent, and it wasn't necessary or even suggested that it be specifically named. My original language, as I proposed it, said something about CBDs with levels of THC at .7% or higher, and the attorney said, "No, you don't want to put that in your policy language."
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was, in one of the other policies, it does mention CBD? Is that correct? Or am I mistaken from what I was reading?
You're absolutely right. When we get to the medication policy, you'll see it mentioned there, and our nurses are with us virtually to help explain why it's there specifically.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving revised policy 4131, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine C?
It can't, oh, shoot.
Go ahead.
I was just, just for clarification on that then. So, that's a substance like CBD oil or cream or something like that, which is legal, is not legal to be used in the school?
Correct, right.
Why would we do that?
Let me get to the language here. And Ms. Elihausen, if you, if you feel compelled to add to this, I encourage you to speak up. I'm-
All right. You know, I just, just thinking about it, there are other things that are legal, like smoking, that we don't allow either, so that's okay. So, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with that. I just had to think it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Otherwise, just remember, Wisconsin law protects the use of lawful products, so that's really the impetus behind making sure that we determine whether it's a controlled substance or not based upon the levels of the THC that might exist in terms of how we would then act in the event an employee violated a policy.
All right.
Okay. Next is item nine C, policy 5350, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use, abuse prevention, intervention, and treatment, last reviewed and revised on 10/2014. This is a policy with no, we're not recommending any changes. It's just to reconfirm. Dr. Miller?
This policy is required by statute that we have a means by which we provide support and intervention to our students who have addictions. And so, this is, this is a policy in which we're required, and because we were updating the other policies, and the last time this was revised is in 2014, I thought it prudent to bring it back to the board and just reconfirm it.
So, I'm looking for a motion to reconfirm policy 5350.
So moved.
So, a motion by Mr. Campbell and a second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is policy nine D, policy 5351, alcohol, tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and similar electronic smoking devices and other drug use or possession of drug paraphernalia on school premises or at school functions. Last reviewed and revised, November 2014. Dr. Miller?
So, there, there are no substantive changes here. We've been trying to update our policy, so we don't use the word pupils anymore. So, we did change that to students. I am noticing that we did not strike the cross-references. One of the things we've been doing in our policies is striking cross-references because it's hard to track things. So, that would be a change that I would add to what, what is in front of you right now, is I would strike that. This was a starting point for our school nurses in terms of should we have specific language about CBD, and they believe we do not need specific language. So, if you have, if you'd like for them to clarify, they're present with us today to clarify why that's the case. So, maybe we should do that. Ms. Call or Ms. O'Neal, would you, would you like to please clarify why we have not specifically named CBD in the student policy?
Hey, this is Ms. Call. So, our intention was to use the medication policy to address what would and wouldn't be approved uses for CBD, just like any other medication that we would come across that students might possess in school. So, I think once we get to the medication policy, that people make a little bit more sense because I completely appreciate the question about, if it's a legal medication, why would we not allow it? But when we reviewed this policy, we felt like the verbiage that was there already addresses what our intended management of any CBD-containing products would be in the building.
You'll notice in paragraph two, it talks about any quantity of drugs. So, any quantity, even if it's the lower than that .7% that I mentioned, it would not be allowed. So, and any quantity. And I might have cut you off, Ms. O'Neal, so I apologize.
But is it really like an oil? Some of these things are, I mean, they put it in everything, don't they? I mean, it can show up in all kinds of products.
Are you hearing the question? The question and comment is, doesn't it show up in many things? Isn't it in oils and other things? So, again, if you could respond, please?
Yes, it is in a variety of different CBD oils, gummies. It's hitting the market pretty prevalently over the last few years. So, that's a lot of our reason for looking at it in policy. The problem is that the way that we're seeing it in the industry is as a supplement. And supplements are not FDA-regulated as far as what contained in anything that's marketed as a supplement. So, our goal with this is to say that we would approve medications that are FDA-approved, usage of a medication, of a medication like CBD. The majority of what you see, although it can be sold legally, is not FDA-approved as a medication.
Well, this policy is about illegal drugs. So, if they had a supplement that had that in, it would be okay to take it to school?
I'm sorry, did you hear that?
Pete, that, this is Lori O'Neal.
Thank you. Did you hear the comment?
I didn't. Do you mind repeating that, please?
Sure.
Yes, my, my comment was that if it's a supplement, they could, could they bring it to school and it'd be okay? Because it's not, it's, you know, it's a food item almost, so it's not a drug.
Sure. So, as Ms. Call stated, with anything with CBD at this point is not FDA-regulated, whether it be lotions or supplements. So, due to that issue, because CBD comes from cannabis, and it is one of the compounds in addition to THC, when laboratory testing has been done with various products that have like CBD-containing products, they've found that they often do contain percentages of THC that do make them illegal. So, because of the lack of FDA regulation across these products, it is our recommendation, after reviewing the latest evidence, talking with the leading pediatric experts, and reviewing legal insight and F A recommendation of our legal counsel, to only approve the FDA-approved cannabis-derived medication and product.
So, in other words, they're, they're not allowed to have those supplements that have the THC or CBD in school?
That is correct. The only CBD-containing products that we would allow would be products that are FDA-approved, and that was what we have listed in our medication policy.
So, unless the student brings it and follows the procedures for a prescribed medication, it is not allowed in school?
Correct.
So, is that the same with any supplement that is not FDA-approved? Or are we just singling out CBD supplements? And if so, why?
Our, our focus is on the CBD supplements because of the likelihood that it could contain a percentage of THC that we can't detect or test for.
But aren't there, aren't, aren't there dangerous, potentially dangerous drugs in other supplement products? A lot of the, you know, just because it's carried at the GNC store doesn't mean it's safe for everybody. And why are we just singling these out then?
Sure, I appreciate your thoughtfulness on that. We have with over-the-counter medications, other natural products, including dietary supplements, we ensure that we have documentation from a practitioner, so whether it be a nurse practitioner or physician, that fills out the appropriate paperwork because we do have some students who take dietary supplements for various different reasons. And we always want to make sure that student safety is our top priority.
So, even if they are not FDA-approved also, you're allowing those? So, you're, you're allowing some FDA, you're saying some have to be FDA-approved and others are okay if they're not?
No, the, what we're seeing is that the, it has to be authorized by a licensed prescriber.
So, if, so if CBD oil was authorized by a licensed prescriber, then it would be okay?
Again, you'll see that in the, you'll see in the medication policy.
But why not? I guess would be my point. Because you're picking and choosing as far as your rules.
I, I guess I'll, I'll interject here. So, it is my understanding that what we have in the medication policy is how and in what, on what circumstances we would allow CBD.
Okay. I'll wait till I see that policy then.
It is there.
Okay.
If a student's taking a supplement and we know about it, we would investigate whether that supplement has anything in it that could be harmful, and we would confer with their doctor or parent to see if we would allow or not allow that to be utilized. So, the reality of it is, I'm sure there's lots of kids who take supplements. We have no idea they're taking them.
All right.
And anything that we get requests to administer in schools, Lori and I do work super closely with the prescribing provider and the parents if it is ever a medication that we are, and I can't off the top of my head in my three years think of one that I haven't been familiar with. But if we did get a request to administer any sort of supplement or item that kind of falls out of the realm of ones where we know that it, pharmacy was filled by what the ingredient of it would be, that we would not, we would not be administering something like that without getting more information about it. So, I think the concern with CBD really is the fact that it's a derivative of cannabis and can have psychotropic effects if we're not careful of what the concentration of other drugs that are contained within it could be.
Thank you.
So, it's, so it sounds like then that, you know, someone shows up at a supplement, it doesn't even go under this policy. It immediately is assumed to be somewhat of a medication, and you go to the other policy. Because this doesn't talk about any kind of-
Right, right.
It's not assumed to be a drug, it's assumed to be a supplement, or who goes to the other policy?
Right. Okay.
So, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy 5351 as presented with the addition of the cross-references. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Um, when I read 5350, and we talked about treatment and intervention, and that if somebody has an addiction, we're going to work with them, et cetera. And then, and this is not the policy, but it's in the enforcement. And recommended enforcement is if anybody is in possession of alcohol or tobacco, two things which you can be addicted to. We will confiscate, contact parents, contact police, suspend one to five days, refer student to assistance program where appropriate, and recommend expulsion. Not discuss if expulsion is appropriate, we're going to recommend expulsion. And I have, I have problems with that. It seems like we're going to do all this intervention and work with the person, and then they're just going to expel you.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree. I mean, I think it would be a situation more likely where they're perhaps were distributing drugs that were illegal.
And we should say that.
But the way that this is written, it's a recommended enforcement. So, the word recommended is providing you, providing us options for what actions we would choose to take in any given situation. So, these are recommended enforcement actions. Doesn't mean we, we absolutely go step by step and, and do them every time.
So, we recommend that we recommend expulsion, so to speak.
Well, we can only, administration can only recommend expulsion. The board actually does the expulsion. The admin can only recommend.
Okay. I didn't look at it that way, thank you.
Yeah.
It does say, in accordance with state statutes. You mean, states said we should be recommending expulsion, or?
The manner in which we recommend it, expulsion has to be done-
Okay, under those rules.
With regard to state statute.
Okay, I thought the state was requiring us to recommend.
Yeah. So, with, with a number of our policies that pertain to discipline, their recommended actions, and the, the administration thinks carefully and considers carefully the individual circumstance and determines what's the appropriate level of discipline given the situation with the student. And that would be the case with this as well. But most likely, you would see any kind of student who's distributing any kind of drugs being recommended for expulsion. That's different than a student who has an addiction problem.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is nine E, policy 5314, medication policy, last revised December of 2017. Dr. Miller?
Okay, so here is the policy where our nurses worked on adding language as it would pertain to a student coming to school saying, "My doctor says I can have CBD." So, would, would you like to ask questions? Or would you like them to provide you a description of what they're recommending here?
Well, here's, here's the, the point here is, again, it says FDA-approved cannabis-derived medication. So, that means if a physician were to prescribe some cream that's, you know, CBD cream of some kind or something like that, they're going to say no, even if it's physician-recommended? Whereas, in other situations, if a physician recommends a supplement, they're going to say yes, based on what their comments were before.
You want to respond, please?
Sure. So, I think the FDA-approved piece is a little tricky because physicians can prescribe things that are off-label, but they cannot prescribe things that are FDA-approved. So, if you are prescribed a drug for an approved use, you can be sure FDA has done a careful evaluation, the benefits and risks. The decision to use the drug is supported by scientific data. It's approved for drug labeling. So, physicians are not going to be prescribing us supplements by their role that have not gone through this process.
But you just said earlier in your, you just said earlier that there are some supplements that have been recommended by physicians that you administer. I thought that's what I understood you saying before.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You cut off towards the end.
From what you were saying before, I thought you said that there were some other, when I mentioned GNC supplements or something like that, you said there are supplements that students are taking that have been recommended by physicians that you've looked at and you've approved.
Yeah, this is Lori O'Neal, I can respond to that. Yeah, we have, like, for example, we have a student who would prescribe a supplement that was for, for GI health, that her GI doctor had evaluated the evidence and shared that information and recommendation with us. And we were able to evaluate that supplement and discuss it with that physician and family to which we thought it was safe for us to administer and the student to take.
But why wouldn't, why wouldn't you do that in this case also then?
That and CBD is, again, that concern with, you know, the potential for the level of THC to be in CBD that could cause a psychotropic effect.
But Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, since I'm not with you right now, that supplement was an FDA-approved supplement. It was being used for a purpose other than what it was approved for. So, it's already been through this scientific process of making sure that it's safe-
I understand the FDA.
To administer. It's just being used for a different purpose. So, different than what we'd be talking about with CBD oils and creams, correct? Yes.
Okay. Totally different.
And if you look at the, the way the policy is written, we're talking about, we're administering this drug. We're not just allowing someone to take it, we're administering it. So, we get to decide what we're going to feel comfortable and safe administering in any situation. So, I think that's really key here. These are administrative rules. These are procedures. And I respect that the nurses are making the right decision on our behalf.
So, I'm looking for a motion. I lost track. So I'm looking for a motion, I lost track here, to, to, this is just reconfirmed. I'm looking for a motion to reconfirm policy 5314.
No, it's to approve.
Revised.
It's a revised policy.
The policy itself is not being revised.
Yeah, it's just the rules.
We brought it to you to share the rule, so you would know what we were adding to the rule. We wouldn't have to have brought this to the board, but again, because of its relationship to every other policy on the table, I thought it would be good for you to see what we were adding to the rule. But the policy itself really is one sentence, so it's very brief.
So it's reconfirming policy 5314.
Gotcha.
Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion?
Can I get into the administration again?
Yeah.
Over-the-counter medications. It says, "Over-the-counter medications shall only be administered, prescribed by a practitioner and accompanied by a crest, a request to administer medication form." Then we skip the exception and we go right to, "But the decision to grant or deny a parent or legal guardian's request to administer medication rests with the district nurses." So a doctor prescribes, and the parents want it done, but the nurse can say, "We're not doing it." Can you give me an example of why they would do that?
Can you provide an example of that? Did you hear the question? I should ask that first.
We did, we did hear the question.
Okay.
I can't think of a example at the moment.
So can a parent come in and administer this then if the nurses will not?
Can you repeat that question, please?
So the question was, can a parent administer if the, the nurses would not administer the medication?
We've had situations where, say, a student was on like antibiotics for a brief time, and parents were unable to get the proper paperwork for us to administer that medication. We've had parents come to give the medication at school. If it would be something that we would be uncomfortable administering due to the concern of, say, psychotropic effects or other, you know, cognitive effects that a medication might have, I think that would be a discussion that we would have with the family, with the practitioner, with administration about how we would proceed.
And, and there, there potentially could be instances where the method in which you have to administer a drug might be beyond something that we want to take responsibility for.
And.
I don't know if that's been the case, but I certainly know there are medications that are provided in various manners, and it, you know, if we don't have the personnel to administer those drugs in that manner, then we may not be able to administer it. You can help me out with that without getting too graphic.
Yep, I'm thinking, and kind of along those routes, not even the route to administer, but the possible side effects of medication. So there is absolutely a potential that we could have parents and providers who can't understand, who wouldn't know what our ability is to monitor the level of stability of a student, so maybe the medication would cause a decrease in respiratory drive. And a lot of physicians don't know how we're set up in a school setting to intervene if different things would happen after giving a medication. So that might be a good scenario example of if we deem that the risk to the student in any situation from the side effects of a medication are too great to do in a school setting, we would have some more conversations around that before we would proceed with giving anything.
I think what you're hearing, Mr. Alex Sandrovic, is it's extremely rare that we can't work these things out with parents, or we have situations where we ever say, "No, we're not going to do that." We, we work with the families to make sure the children have what they need at school, but we're not a hospital.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And last is 9F, policy 1500, smoking, tobacco, e-cigarette use prohibited, last reviewed, revised October 2014. Dr. Miller?
This policy actually was renumbered. It was 3250 something. It was in the business section of your policies, so I'm moving it to the community section because I feel that's where it belongs. It relates to our community on our property, either smoking or using e-cigarettes. So I changed the number. We, Ms. Evans and I spoke about this a little bit. We do have some post-it notices at the high school primarily about this. We think it's important to continue to have them and to update them. They, they say tobacco, but I think we need to revise them to say e-cigarettes and vaping because people innocently are at a football game and they've got a vaping device, and there's an ordinance in the city where it's illegal and you can't do it, but we still think it'd be wise to post it so that when you do approach someone, you can point to it and say, "It's posted right here." We don't have essentially a district newsletter where we would put this, so it would be recommended we just take that out of the policy. And then with regard to what happens if someone is violating the policy, essentially, we're going to approach that person, be polite, and ask them to not do what they're doing, and if they don't comply, we'll ask them to leave. So you, technically, you wouldn't have to have the policy because there is an ordinance, but it, you know, with the amount of vaping that goes on right now, it might be wise to just keep the policy on the books a little while. So that's, that's why it's here. Lots of policies around this.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy 1500 as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alex Sandrovic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion?
So when, when you went to students, so you didn't add e-cigarettes?
It, it is in there.
It says students are prohibited from possessing or using any tobacco products on school property and are subject to discipline, including whatever.
Next line.
This is the last.
Tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and electronic smoking devices.
I read, I read it right.
We were one of the first school districts in the state to add that to our policy. That was back in 2014, I think.
Okay, it's in the guidelines where you didn't change anything, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, item 10, closed session. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub C, for district administrator performance standards evaluation. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alex Sandrovic?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Evans?
Aye. Motion carries. We are in closed session at 6:38. Thank you, administrators.
Yep, and I would ask that everyone except for Mr. Milzer, please leave the call at this time. Thank you for attending.
So we are back in open session at 7:43. There is no action to be taken from closed session. And item 11 is school board meeting debriefing. Are there any comments from the board? Okay. Hearing none. Future agenda items, item 12, 12A, the 2021 staffing report will be on May 20th, and then the 2020-21 CISA 1 contract on June 17th, and then the 2020-21 SWSA agreement on June 17th, and the payment to the Fund 46 on June 17th, and the school improvement plan update on June 17th. And then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:44.